Will the clerk please call the roll?
Miller.
Here.
Eckhart.
Here.
Benson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Valencia.
Fisher.
Here.
Stelling.
Here.
Hannaford.
Here.
Item number four is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 7, 2015, and approval of claims in the amount of $138,829.31 and payroll expenses of $101,059.8. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Benson and a second by Dr. Hannaford to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson.
Yes.
Hannaford.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Item number six is reports from boards and officers. The Park and Building Committee met on 12/7. It's Randy or Chris. Is that right?
Well, those are the two who, Councilman Valencia is the chairman, but if you...
He's not here.
If you would like to make a comment, otherwise I can fill in.
You can fill in.
Okay. Well, during the Park and Building Committee meeting, one of the, some of the things that were discussed were the ambulance building, the Public Works building, upgrades at the library, the development of a parks master plan, and some of the things that have come back. The ambulance building is in need of being rehabbed. The quotes that we have received to date have been well over $100,000. It's going to push us over into public construction, and we are currently looking to see if there is a way for the city to act as a general contractor and build this, or get this rehabbed into a more usable building. Some of the things that the committee did ask was to look at a couple of different locations besides the current location, and we are checking into that. Public Works building is pretty much the same condition. We do, we are in the need of expansion. It doesn't house a lot of the equipment that is needed. Restrooms are in serious need of being added to, so this is something that we are currently still looking at. We are waiting on engineers' estimates for that to give a firmer price of what that could cost. The library building, the roof is still leaking pretty badly. We're looking at, on the 30th, we've got somebody to come and snake, or run a camera down the drain system on the roof to see if that's where the leak is, but we're still in dire need of trying to determine where the leak is at. We've replaced, had roof work done, but it hasn't stopped all the leaks. And then the last thing that was discussed, or one of the last things that was discussed, was the development of a parks master plan. And this, with this plan would be to upgrade our, have a 20-year plan, our strategic plan out there for the upgrade and the enhancements of our, both our Bud Rose and our Hatfield parks. And that was the bulk of what was discussed at that meeting.
Council have any questions or anything to add? All right. Cemetery Board meeting from December 9.
It was a pretty routine meeting. Basically, the approval of minutes and claims, had financial reports, section report. One of the big topics of discussion at this point at the cemetery is trying to add a columbarium, and we're currently looking at prices for that and where that would be placed and how that could be utilized in, at our cemetery. And that was all that was pretty much discussed at that meeting.
Anybody have any questions from the council for Mr. Dunham on the cemetery board report? Airport Board meeting from December 14. Councilman Miller.
Other than the routine items we had, we had an update on the taxiway extension. Things are rolling along there pretty well. We had discussion, form a committee to go over any policies that may be in place to review those and make sure that they are up to date. Members long-stemming Kinsey will work with Joe Don and the airport manager to go through that. And we had action to have staff prepare bid specifications for the new T-hangers. Joe Don will be getting with the city engineer to help, or the airport engineer to have them help the airport board determine what size hanger and the details of those hangars would work best for that. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
Does council have any questions for Councilman Miller? All right. ARC Committee meeting from December 16.
There was not a quorum in that meeting. There was no meeting held.
About Tourism Committee meeting from the 16th.
Well, I have not seen the minutes from that meeting, but according to the agenda, it was, the bulk of the discussion items were relatively routine. The approval of minutes, approval of financial reports for September and October and November. But there was apparently a lot of discussion about the appointment, the appointment of a trustee to the Arena Authority. I believe the board had, ultimately had some questions that they were going to consult the city attorney on about that appointment, and I do not know what has transpired there. And I do believe they are planning a special meeting sometime around the 29th, I believe. I have not seen an agenda for that or seen a set date for that, but that's based on some emails that I've received.
Council have any questions for Mr. Dunham on the Tourism Committee meeting? Councilman Miller, would you give the Finance Committee report for this evening?
We had several, we had quite a few large claims that we are paying tonight, and others mentioned a few of the big ones, the General Fund, oil fuel, and we had a workers' comp payment of $24,000. And then through the AUA fund, we had some other, we can discuss those later, but the workers' comp is a large claim for the General Fund. We also discussed sales tax collections being down. They are down from last year, but if we look historically over the last several years, two to three, we're actually not that far off where we were just two to three years ago. And majority of our expenses have been in capital improvements, so while we've been collecting more in sales tax, we've been taking that money and using it for capital improvement items that hasn't been going into added expense as far as payroll expenses or adding new positions that are going to cost the city as we move forward. We've been, we've been doing a lot of those capital improvement projects, which we'll see benefit from over the next 20, 30 years. We did have some discussion on the new construction and development behind Wal-Mart. We're still waiting on firm plans for that before we can move ahead with any of the items that the city would have to pay for as far as water and sewer lines that we may be running just on other properties when that happens. Those items took up the bulk of our time. Looked at current investments and cash and investments.
Does council have any questions for Councilman Miller?
Well, another, another high reason our expenditure were a little higher this month is because we had an extra week in payroll. That's another higher expense. I guess no questions, just a comment.
Thank you for the point of clarification. Appreciate it. All right. Mayor's report. I have been giving consideration to the appointment for the Arena Authority. I've been, if I read it correctly, and councilor, you can chime in, but if I read it correctly, it's not required that this position be a city council member that's appointed by the city council, but just an appointee from the city council. So part of, you know, my own deliberation that I'm going through right now is council member versus member of the community otherwise, and I hope to by January have a person to present to the council, take feedback and suggestions, as you guys have it, of course. I want to, I guess, point out just a couple of things that Joe Don's probably going to steal his thunder, but I really want to give some kudos out to the Police Department, Fire Department for both their work with Toys for Tots and as well as the Cops and Kids Program that they did. I think that was a really outstanding thing, and both of those things. I know the Fire Department's been doing the Toys for Tots for several years, and the Police Department has just started this Cops and Kids Program, but please share with them that's what makes it out of a special place. I'll answer any questions if the councilmen have. All right. Business managers' report.
Well, I'd like to start off with kind of touching base with the financials for the city of Alva through November 2015. We have collected about $4.9 million, or about 36% of our annual budget through November, and have expended about 6.8 million, which is 43% of our annual budget. There have been no substantial changes in the financial picture over the last month. Revenues from operations are still below the 2014-2015 level for the same timeframe, but they're about equal to where they were in 2013-2014. The largest area of decline, of course, is our sales and use tax, where these are down 21% from 2014-2015. They are only down about 8% from what our expectations were. We were expecting a decline in our sales tax when we developed our budget. Staff in the Finance Committee continue to monitor these, this area, this revenue area very closely. The next largest area of collections is charges for services, and over the past three years, or two years, the city has seen slight increases each year, and that would be the case this year. It's about 1% more than what it was the same timeframe last year. When we look at our expenditures, the largest area of increase is certainly capital improvements, but the bulk of these items have been purchased from prior year's collections. When we remove these expenditures out of the equation, and we just look at the city's operating expenditures, we see that we are looking at about a 5% decrease in expenditures from the same timeframe as last year. Currently, we are evaluating every, every expenditure for necessity, and will continue to practice, continue this practice until the outlook improves. As far as our projects that we've got going, we do have two, two grant applications out there right now that we were waiting to hear back from. We just submitted the REAP grant for the Polycott Program. Oklahoma, the OEDA received that on the 14th of December. It was due on the 15th. We should know something back from that after, around mid-January. We do have a grant application of $100,000 into the Wisdom Foundation for a comprehensive plan. The current comprehensive plan is dated June 30, 1970. Typically, these documents are updated every 10 years, and assuming this grant is awarded, the planning horizon that we would be looking at for this comprehensive plan would be through 2025. We would look at certainly recommendations of annual reviews and updates every year. Water projects, the main one that we have going on right now is, of course, our AMR project. There have been, you know, we're about 55% of the meter, we've replaced about 55% of the meters in the city of Alva. This installation process has not gone as smoothly as staff had hoped. There have been numerous issues with valves, minor repairs due to age of meters, and things of this nature. We have experienced some problems with a number of the repairs, which have required much more staff's time than what we had originally expected. We're currently still working with Ferguson Water Works to get the meters replaced, and everybody up to speed. There have been a few other things that have come to my attention here lately that we will address with Ferguson about problems that have happened after the meter has been replaced. We've got two airport projects going on right now. The taxiway extension project, the concrete portion of this project was wrapped up on December 18. There's still some finished dirt work that's going to need to be done by the contractor. Then sodding of the area will need to be handled separately through the airport and the city. New project that's come up with the, new project, but not new for the budget, that has come up since the last airport meeting, was the hangar project, hangar construction. And we're currently looking, working with Garber Engineering to get the engineering specs for the T-hanger construction. We expect to have this ready for the airport board's approval in their January meeting. Miscellaneous reports that we have out there is, the main one I've got right now is the 522 District Task Force. Back in March and April, the city council voted to have myself and the ambulance director Chad Campbell serve on this task force. We've been meeting since March to research and discuss the applicability and feasibility of a 522 district for Woods County. The task force was then to make a recommendation to the county commissioners. It is expected that the task force will recommend to the county commissioners to pursue a 522 district with a meal levy of up to three, up to three meals at velourum tax. This would go to support the local ambulance services in Woods County. If it is elected and in its path, the 522 district would consist of seven members. Two would be appointed from each of the ambulance districts, and one at large, and there would be appointments made by the county commissioners. The funds, if voted and approved, would be, would go toward the operation and capital equipment upgrades for each ambulance service, with the expectation that there's no diminishment of current levels backing from the supporting entities. The proposition language was reviewed. We've made suggested changes back to legal counsel. That has been made, and we do expect that recommendation to go to the county commissioners. We are still looking for full-time paramedic and EMT basic, and also a part-time EMT. And see, one thing I would be negligent if I didn't mention would be the congratulations to Randy Rhodes. I asked him to be at the meeting. His shyness precluded him from being here, but he did complete 20, he has completed 25 years of service with the city of Alva. We do have recognition certificate and pen for him for that. He is one of numerous employees that we have that have in excess of 25 years of service with the city of Alva, and this is a great benefit to me personally as a city manager, and also is a, I think it represents the city well that we are able to maintain employees for such length of service. His input has been greatly appreciated, and his service has been greatly appreciated over the past 25 years. And mayor and council, that would be my report, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Council have any questions for Mr. Dunham? Thank you, Joe Don. Item number seven is discussion and action on ordinance number 2015-053, an ordinance relating to traffic and vehicles amending Chapter 42 of the Alva Code of Ordinances, Section 42, 2, definitions and creating Article 15, texting while driving, providing punishment for violations of said section, providing for repealer, and declaring an emergency.
This ordinance basically mimics state law, state law, House Bill Number 1965, which went into effect November 1st for the state of Oklahoma, and it just makes, our city ordinances mimic the state of Oklahoma ordinance, laws. If there are no questions, I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are about this particular ordinance, but if there are none, I certainly would recommend the passage of the ordinance.
The main reason for this is so the city can receive that fine as opposed to going for the state, correct?
That would be, yes, correct. Because there is a $100 fine, that the state law does impose a $100 fine. If there is not a, you know, city police officers can certainly enforce that law now, but if they do stop somebody for texting while driving, that is, would currently be a district court ticket, not a city of Alva municipal ticket.
Would there be a motion to approve this ordinance?
I'd make a motion to approve Alva Code Ordinance, Section 6. Ordinance number 2015-053 relating to traffic and vehicles amending Chapter 42 of the Alva Code of Ordinances, Section 42-2, definitions and creating Article 15, texting while driving, providing punishment for violations of said section, providing for repealer. Do you have an emergency or something?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, second by Councilman Melton, to approve ordinance number 2015-053, an ordinance relating to traffic and vehicles amending Chapter 42 of the Alva Code of Ordinances, Section 42, 2, definitions and creating Article 15, texting while driving, providing punishment for violations of said section.
And providing for repealer.
And providing for repealer. Is there any further discussion? Clerk, please call the vote.
Miller.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hannaford.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Melton.
Nothing against my fellow councilmen, but no.
Fisher.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Item number nine is discussion and action to enter into executive session pursuant to 25 OS 307 B2 to discuss negotiations with IAFF Local 3782, Alva, Oklahoma. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Benson, second by Councilman Eckhart, to enter into executive session, as stated. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Hannaford.
Yes.
Stelling.
Item number 11 is discussion and action on negotiations with IAFF Local 3782, Alva, Oklahoma, as discussed in executive session. Is there a motion to be made by the council?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve the contract that was presented and that the fire union has already approved and signed.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Benson, a second by Dr. Hannaford, to approve the contract that has been presented to council and signed by IAFF Local 3782, as discussed in executive session. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson.
Yes.
Hannaford.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Item number 12 is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Public comment will be limited to two minutes per speaker, and the speaker must identify himself or herself. Is there any comment, our attendees this evening? Thank you. And item 13 is remarks and inquiries by council members. All right. Well, we will close this meeting of the Alva City Council and open the meeting of the Alva Utility Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Miller.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Benson.
Here.
Eckhart.
Here.
Valencia.
Yes.
Fisher.
Here.
Stelling.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Item number 12 is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Public comment will be limited to two minutes per speaker, and the speaker must identify himself or herself. Is there any comment, our attendees this evening? Thank you. And item 13 is remarks and inquiries by council members. All right. Well, we will close this meeting of the Alva City Council and open the meeting of the Alva Utility Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Miller.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Benson.
Here.
Eckhart.
Here.
Valencia.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Hannaford.
Yes.
Stelling.
Item number 11 is discussion and action on negotiations with IAFF Local 3782, Alva, Oklahoma, as discussed in executive session. Is there a motion to be made by the council?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we approve the contract that was presented and that the fire union has already approved and signed.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Benson, a second by Dr. Hannaford, to approve the contract that has been presented to council and signed by IAFF Local 3782, as discussed in executive session. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Benson.
Yes.
Hannaford.
Yes.
Stelling.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Item number 12 is remarks and inquiries by citizens. Public comment will be limited to two minutes per speaker, and the speaker must identify himself or herself. Is there any comment, our attendees this evening? Thank you. And item 13 is remarks and inquiries by council members. All right. Well, we will close this meeting of the Alva City Council and open the meeting of the Alva Utility Authority. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Miller.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Benson.
Here.
Eckhart.
Here.
Valencia.
Yes.
Fisher.
Here.
Stelling.
Yes.
Eckhart.
Yes.
Valencia.
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item number three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at A U A meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 7, 2015, and approval of claims in the amount of $164,429.34, and payroll expenses of $25,256.80. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Miller, a second by Councilman Fisher, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Item number three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at A E D A meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 7, 2015, and approval of claims in the amount of $24,808.35, and payroll expenses of $5,461.75. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.